My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is founded on a mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Councilmember Zerfing?
Here.
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Haight?
Here.
Councilmember Masters?
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Okay. Amendments to the agenda. I am going to apologize to the public first this, I did not have, I did not get a chance to review the agenda before the meeting. Before the packets were set out, I was over enjoying some family time across the river at the fair and therefore some things got on the agenda that weren't supposed to be. And because public, there's comments by the general public, I will allow that, but I'm only going to allow 15 minutes and it is only going to be on things that are on the agenda for tonight because we are here to do meeting, we're doing a special meeting to deal with specific issues. So I will ask for a raise of hands of people who want to talk and we'll divide that 15 minutes up in that way. Also after that, again, I apologize, we were supposed to have the executive session first, so after the public comments, we will go into executive session. I don't anticipate it being a very long executive session and then we'll come back in to do city business. And that's all we're going to do is the three things that are on our, in our new business item thing tonight. So that being said, can I see a show of hands of how many people who want to speak in public comments on the three things that are on our agenda tonight? Okay. Then I will give you each five minutes time to be able to speak. Who would like to go first? Somebody has to go first.
What, um, Tino Tronik, Cascade Labs. Um, it is about the volunteer fire department. It's not necessarily about the structural change. Would that apply or not apply?
It wouldn't.
It has to do with them being legal entity.
No, we're here just to discuss the structural change tonight. You've changed your mind?
Yes. Um, I guess next meeting, is it going to be pretty well specified if it's what's on the agenda or not on the agenda?
This is a special meeting, it's just something that's, this is not a normal council meeting and I apologize for the confusion. It was just-
What's the rules for the next regular meeting?
It will be the regular meeting.
Okay, so what's not on the agenda?
Whatever public comment well you choose to make it, well, it will be.
Good evening, Rob Rossdorf, Cascade Labs. I'm not even sure what's on the agenda, it seems to change fairly regularly and so it's somewhat difficult, but I do believe there was something on there in regard to the potential hiring, I guess you'd say, of a new city administrator. So that's what I wanted to address. Basically, I wanted to talk for a moment about process as I've seen it over the last, I don't know, what is it, month or so. It seems in the past that council has gone to the League of Oregon Cities to have people vetted that are brought in for, as candidates for that position. This time, if I'm not mistaken, that process was changed and the interim city administrator, Rich Carson, actually brought in the people. I think originally there were six of them, if I'm not mistaken, and eventually it got down to three people. And I'm just curious as to why they weren't vetted before they were brought in. It seems to me that's putting the cart before the horse, but maybe there were some things I was unaware of. At any rate, the first, first thing after that particular part of the process was an announcement in the Hood River News that we were hiring a gentleman by the name of Eric Strahl as our city administrator. And at no time did I see a retraction of that statement. So I think there's this assumption out in the county now that Mr. Strahl has been hired as our city administrator. Again, I can't be certain of that, but that's kind of what, the way I took it. And I'm wondering why there wasn't a background check done on Mr. Strahl before he was brought out here? He came all the way out from Minnesota or Michigan or someplace, someplace in the upper Midwest, if I'm not mistaken. And apparently there was absolutely nothing done. If a person went on the internet and looked around just a little bit, you would find that Mr. Strahl has some HR issues, I guess is how I would put it politely. And it seems to me that that's a strange combination to bring into a town where the interim city administrator spoke of in his last email, or second to last email, about a hostile work environment. And I'm not real sure how those two things work out together. So I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, what, how, how this was figured out, or was it figured out, or did, was this kind of rolled out and it just kind of happened, or was there some forethought given to this process before it was entered into? And lastly, on whose dime was Mr. Strahl brought out here? As usual, no answers, but it's okay. Thank you.
Were there any more public comments? Okay, that being said, then we need to move into executive session for ORS 1926602A, employment of public officers, employees, and agents, which means that either we need to go, or you guys, you guys are going to have to step out for a minute. At this time, the council's going to explain to the public what's going on. We, the two candidates that we had for the city administrator that we interviewed and we had a discussion, we had interviewed, several interviews with, have withdrawn their bid for the city administrator position. Staff has researched hiring of the League of Oregon Cities to do our next search for a city administrator and has found that we are not the only town that is doing this and therefore they are not available until the first of next year. So there are other options out there, where staff is looking into them right now and they are more expensive options, alternatives. We don't know how much they are, but we're looking into that. In the meantime, the council has come to a consensus in executive session that we need to authorize the mayor to find an interim city administrator. So. So that, that being said, we need a motion to that effect.
I have moved to authorize the mayor, George Fisher, to find an interim city administrator for the city.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kevin Benson and seconded by Don Haight. Council discussion. Hearing none, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed. And abstained.
So the motion passes. And Lance, did you want to make any statement as to why?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just like to point out that hiring a city administrator, whether interim or otherwise, is one of the more important decisions the council can make. It's one of the more important decisions for our community and I do believe that it needs to be done as part of a public and open process. And I believe that the interview process that involves all the elected officials is part of that public and open process. And I don't see any reason for the council to give up their responsibility to do that. Thank you.
Okay. That being said, we will move on to approve contract with Springfield for ambulance billing.
Has this been reviewed by?
Yes, have you reviewed this contract?
I did not, but I'm familiar with this contract and have reviewed it in the past.
Okay, okay.
I make a motion that we accept the contract with the city of Springfield for ambulance billing.
A second.
The motion's been made by Don Haight, seconded by Eva Zerfing. Any council discussion?
I would like to be recognized.
Go ahead.
Okay. One of the things that I want to make clear in this, I looked over the contract as well. It looks like it's kind of a redo from last year. A couple changes have been made in terms of the HIPAA reporting and protection for patients. And then at the end, another change was made in that Jeff Fisher's name was crossed out. She's no longer the fire chief, no longer an employee of the city. And Mary Ann Bubbs' name was replaced as a contact person for the city. And it brings up a couple points for me. Primarily, this is a temporary solution to our billing, the situation that we, we're not able to bill at this point. It's only temporary, but it is a solution. Mary Ann is not, to my understanding, HIPAA certified to handle those kind of confidential documents, so she will need, she's going to be the contact person, if she's going to be doing the billing, she'll need to be certified in HIPAA. She needs to be trained with this billing system. Those things have to happen before she can be the person in charge of billing. And she has a full-time job already. I'm not sure anyone knows how many hours per day or per week it's going to take for her to be in charge of billing. She sent us an email saying she has a temporary fix, but it is temporary. We still need to take action to address the billing situation. Thank you.
Okay. Do, do we get, in here it says that we have a monthly, on a monthly basis, we get information on how much was bailed, how many patients were bailed. Mary Ann, have you ever seen that monthly report? Is that something that council should see as well? I mean-
I'd like to see the numbers. They, I mean, all it does is tell you how many they bill per month, doesn't give you dates of when the billings they are, but yeah, I can, every time I get one, I can sure get it. If that's what you so desire.
Is there, is there any more discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the contract with Springfield for ambulance billing, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we move into discussion of operational structural change of the fire department. And Mayor, it was my understanding that Mr. Zerfing wants to get up and address the council first.
Is he there?
Yes.
Does he want to address the council?
Do you?
I can, I can speak, but I don't know what you want me to, what you want me to say.
Okay, yes.
First, can I do something here? I need to state a conflict of interest in this matter.
I'm sorry, yes, okay.
I'm still officially married to Jeff Zerfing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, I had some conversations with the mayor about possibly being the acting fire chief at the station. So there was some meetings yesterday and I wasn't privy to the meeting that was happening yesterday, so I'm not exactly sure what happened there. But there was some, some conflicts within the department in regards to me personally and I don't know what all those conflicts are pertaining. I don't know, I don't know where those are coming from exactly. All I, all I'm just going to say here is that if you want a fire department that is ran by captains, I think that's up to the council if they want to do that. If you want to have leadership and structure within the department, you need to assign somebody who is the fire chief to do that, whether it's acting fire chief or permanent fire chief, that's, that's up to you guys. You have the decision-making in that. The thing is, if you're going to make a decision on who's going to be the fire chief, you have to look at qualifications, time, and experience. Those are things you need to look at very heavily on who you're going to choose to be your leader in the department. I think whoever you choose to do that is going to be on a temporary basis, at least that is my impression, because we would be looking and seeking to hire a fire chief, I would think, in the future. Whatever that takes to do that, we're still working on that as far as monies and, and hiring a paramedic and there's just a lot of things to work on there. So if you want somebody who's got the time and experience, I'm willing to do that, but understand, I think maybe you guys already do, that there's some people down there that may not be completely happy if I was to do that job. But I, you know, the people who are currently down there, who have decided they want to be captains, you might want to look at their qualifications and compare, just compare qualifications, training, and experience when you make your decision. So that's all I can say.
So how would we compare the training and experience of the people that are wishing to have that position of interim fire chief?
Currently, you have the board right here that's pretty much spells out everybody's training, except for some of mine isn't totally correct, there's a few that are missing on there for me. And you can look at people's documentation if you want to look at those. I think you're in a, in a position where you need to, you need to find somebody who's a strong leader to do that. So I don't think three people, just my opinion, I just know how I was with my parents, that if I had two parents and I went to ask them for something, I would ask you for something and they would say no, then I would immediately go and ask my mother or my father, vice versa, and play these little games. I worry that if you have not one leader, but you have three, that that becomes a problem in that aspect, because if I didn't get what I wanted, it just keeps a feuding going on within the department. I think you need structure and you need leadership and, and the only way to do that is to designate one person. You can continue to look at time in, time and experience. I think you can, you can just ask the question. Me personally, 20 years in the department, I've been an EMT since 1994, I've been the assistant fire chief since 1994, I've been from the ranks of captain to fire chief and back again, but where I've been most of my career in the Cascadas Fire Department is assistant fire chief underneath the direction of a lot of fire chiefs. So I'm well-known within the county, you can, you can look at that, I understand the structures, I understand how the chiefs work, the chiefs' meetings work, I understand how the 911 system works. I've been involved with the sheriff's office, I was there for four years. I have a wealth of knowledge, I've been to conflagration fires as well as a lot of immediate meetings to the doubts, I've seen a lot of wild land, I've been in structure fires, I've been to, two years of college at Portland Community College. So if you want to look at me, my experience is right here on the board, it's for training. And I know this city very well. I've been here my whole entire life. And I've been in this department my whole entire life.
You can't always believe what you read in the paper, but the paper said that you resigned. Did you actually resign after you were appointed, or what, what happened?
Well, I think, I think some things were said at the, at a meeting in the fire station where I told everybody that I was going to quit. I dropped my radios and pages off to the table. After having some conversations with the mayor and the mayor asking me my position and whether or not I'd be willing to be the fire chief, I have not submitted any letter of resignation after my conversations with the mayor. Quite frankly, before I could even make my next move, my name was all over the newspaper. So I didn't do that. I didn't put my name in the newspaper, some other people did that for me. So quite frankly, I didn't know what else to do because apparently other people are speaking for me in the newspaper. So I, I didn't know, I didn't know how to act to that, especially after having some conversations with the mayor. You know, if, if the department needs some direction, I can give it to the department. But that's up to you guys if you want to go down that road.
Can you explain, one meeting you did come to the council and you said that, you said if you're looking for me to be the interim fire chief, I'm not it, I'm starting a business, I'm, I don't know-
I, I said nothing about being the interim fire chief. In the meeting, something I don't want to be is the fire chief.
Okay.
I think that we need to hire somebody. I'm willing to do the interim fire chief job, but I don't want to be the permanent, because I think there's a permanent solution in this whole thing and that is hiring somebody. Especially if we hire someone from the outside, that gives us a neutral person who can come into the department and still continue to work. There's not a lot of this pressure from, from other sides, biases and other things. I think that we can get someone in here with a fresh start that can do some amazing things with our department. But currently, I, I don't want to do it on a long-term basis. I would be willing to do it to get us out of a, a hole that we're in currently, because we need some leadership. We need leadership within our ranks and currently, I don't believe we have it.
Are there any more questions for Jess?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
This is Lance Masters, Jess. So you said that whatever solution we decide on, whether it's three captains or acting chief, that it's important that we see that as a temporary solution, is that correct?
I believe that to be a temporary solution.
Yeah, when you say temporary, what kind of timeline do you have in mind?
I, I would-
How do you see this working as, as a temporary basis?
I would hope that the city could find a way to gain some revenues in order to hire somebody. So whether that's finding it within the, the ranks of the city or going out for a bond measure, a levy, I don't, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of options to explore, but I think the city is in a position where they need to look at some other ways of gaining some money for the, for the fire department budget. What is temporary? Temporary is until you can hire somebody. How long, how long is that going to take you as the city to hire somebody? I don't know. I don't know how long that is. I would, I would hope that it could be soon, but I understand there's a lot on, on the plate of the council as far as hiring a city administrator and, and these issues currently. So I don't know how long temporary is, but I would hope that it would be, you know, November's coming soon, that's an election, an election year, we could, I don't know if there's time to get anything on the ballot for that, if there's ways of doing, uh, doing some franchise fees or something that could pull the, the, the city out for the fire department, I don't know. I don't know the solutions to that, but long enough to hire somebody.
So are you saying then that if you were to be the acting chief, that you'd be holding that indefinitely until the city found a source of revenue? You'd be willing to do that, is that what you're saying?
If you were to ask me to do it for two years, I would say no. I think two years is a little too long. I think six months to a year, maybe? But I don't, I don't think that, I think a year is too long. I think you should be able to come to a budget solution by then. So I would hope six months and you'd have, you would be able to figure out how to hire somebody.
Okay, are you done Lance?
Thank you.
Okay. Is anybody?
So I have a question for you. And this revolves around the, the stuff that was reported in the newspaper news about a month ago. About Cascade Labs fire not in service. Can you fill us in on that whole, what happened?
As, as far as you seeing that people not responding to calls, that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Quite, to be honest with you, we, we spoke in the, in a meeting that we were concerned about the direction that the fire department was headed with not having a fire chief, with the funding issues. There was a lot of, there was a lot of concern amongst a lot of people in the department. So there was a lot of discussion about what people wanted to do and a lot of people wanted to resign. And I suggested to a lot of people that they not resign, that maybe you would, if you didn't want to respond to calls, then that's up to you, that's your decision to make that. But I was, I was worried that if people were to resign, that they wouldn't, that they wouldn't be able to come back to the department, because then they'd have to go through a whole entire application process again. Now, all I, all I said is, you probably don't want to resign. If you want to remain a member of this department, you don't want to resign. So there was some discussion about that and there was no form of vote, nobody voted or decided in a, in any formal settings to do anything, but I think that maybe a few people didn't respond to calls for, for a little while based off of the discussions in the department. Now, there was, I know that it was about a week's time that elapsed that I don't know that a lot of people were responding to calls. Now, I didn't respond to calls because, not because I didn't, um, not because I was available for calls, although I think everybody just kind of followed everybody's lead and people weren't responding to calls for a while. But I don't know everybody's individual circumstances, I don't know whether or not people were at work, at home, when calls were happening. I don't believe there's very many calls that were missed during that timeframe. So I do believe that there was a timeframe when everybody individually decided that they were going to respond to calls.
Okay, are there any more questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So my, my question is, it may be answered and if you did, I apologize, I'm asking the same question again, but it was said on the letter that, that you actually had resigned or was, or was no longer going to be involved with the fire department. And was that just, was that just a, a point in time- And, and was that just, um, was that just a, a point in time where you had thought that? Or had you actually turned in your pager and your radio to, uh, the other people in the fire department?
Um, yes, I did turn in my stuff to the other people in the department. Um, there was a lot of things that were discussed in, in, in a meeting as far as, um, me not being a fire officer anymore, which is completely baffles my mind that you would take somebody with my experience level and ask them just to be a firefighter, which I was not willing to work at that level. And at that point, I was like, if you guys don't want me to be here, then, you know, then I don't have to be here anymore. So I, I left my radio and stuff on the, on the table and I walked out. Um, but after, immediately stuff got thrown into the newspaper and I had some discussion with the mayor. So after my discussion with the mayor and, and asking, you know, if I'd be willing to be the fire chief, that, uh, you know, reconsidering the idea, but I'm not, I'm not, honestly, I'm not willing to be, um, just a firefighter in the department. You've got a guy of, of, uh, high education within the department as well as experience. And why would you waste that? Why would you waste that and, and just have that person just be a firefighter, work underneath somebody that has maybe not as much, um, training experience? I, I would struggle with that my, myself because I've been in that situation before. Um, and things were very difficult for a lot of people in that situation. So I didn't want, I didn't feel like I wanted to go through that again. So I think this community deserves better. I think they deserve to have, um, the highest quality, highest educated person to be their, the leader of the fire department. I believe that. I strongly believe that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions?
Yeah, another question.
Go ahead Lance.
Um, so we talked a little bit about billing and we signed this contract with Springfield, um, for, for billing. Um, what do you see as the, uh, acting fire chief's role in billing?
Well, either, either that person could go out and get the training and, and be HIPAA certified and be able to, um, forward that stuff to Springfield, or they can assign somebody else. Um, me personally, I, we were working with Sean Parrish to do that. Sean was going to try to, um, collect the, the reports and get those to Mary Ann so that we could get those sent off to Springfield. So that was, that was our plan. Um, my personal feelings would be that would be the way we could continue to do it. Um, and if we need to send Sean or somebody to training for, for HIPAA compliance, we can still do that. Um, but that would be my take on the whole thing. Uh, I don't think the fire chief, especially not a volunteer fire chief, would be able to perform every function of the job that is required of a paid fire chief in the station. If we had a paid fire chief, that person, I would expect that person to take care of the billings and become HIPAA certified and to take care of all that stuff. But a, a volunteer fire chief, I don't think that they have the time to do everything. Attend meetings, um, budgets, uh, bills, responding to calls, all that stuff is, is a lot to ask of a volunteer. So anybody who's a volunteer fire chief would have to rely on others in the, in the department to get the job done.
Okay, are there any more questions, Tom?
Just a question on bill, it might be, uh, Mary Ann. You, you should, you've been around a long time. We haven't been to Springfield all the time. We used to, I assume, do ourselves.
We used to.
Who did our billing and how did we, how did we go about that billing before Springfield?
Before Springfield, actually go back a long ways in history, but my mother used to actually do the billings here at the city hall. She was hired just to do billing for the city. And she built up a, a, a process to do that and she was billing those out here in city hall. But we had, we had a problem after she was no longer working here. Um, there was another employee that came in and was working here and, uh, for like three or four years, there was no billings that were done at all. So for a long time, we didn't send out any of our billings, um, because there was some problems with, uh, HIPAA and there was problems with, um, that person was concerned about liability if they were to send billings out. I don't, I don't remember the whole circumstances there, but billings weren't being done for about three to four years. At that point, we decided, hey, we researched and found Springfield. And Springfield's actually done a great job, um, from what I've seen, my experience. Um, we've increased our revenues by a whole bunch by having somebody that's very experienced and knowledgeable and does a lot of billing, as does Springfield does. And we've collected a ton of money, um, off of our billings in Springfield.
Do you know how long it takes to get HIPAA certified by any chance?
I don't know anything about it, thank you.
Okay.
Sure that somebody would be easily, uh, looked up online or something to find that out.
Okay, and can you mark on that board what the other certifications are that you say that you have that aren't marked?
Um, yeah, I could do that. Um, this one here should be, oh, this one, hold on a minute. Okay, that was, maybe the black one. There should be a yellow right here, so where other people have yellows on here now, um, this one should be yellow. Actually, I have all the training requirements. I just need a task book sign. And then, um, this one here should be blue. And I have the documentation to prove that. And then, um...
Jess, if you want, I think you can set it up on the ledge of that other board.
Okay.
I guess that'll help. Probably helps the council.
Sean Love.
Wow.
Sean Love. Apparently he's trying to get to Springfield. I'm not sure.
Oh, you can point.
But firefighter two, which a lot of you have yellows in there, um, mine should be yellow as well. I don't have the certification paperwork there, but this isn't a requirement. This isn't the requirement to do your job as a firefighter at Casco. It's kind of an extra deal. But it's, it's nice to have, to be able to show, hey, you know, I've gone one step further in my, in my career. Um, I've got the training requirements there. I just don't have the task book sign for that one. Um, and firefighter two, which I have that. That's already done. And, uh, my engine boss, where's the engine boss? Which is, uh, anyways, right here. This should be a yellow. All I need is one more class and that thing's done. Um, otherwise, I think that's it. Instructor's still there. There's only two of us that have that. Otherwise, there would be others.
Are there any more questions for Jess?
Yeah.
Go ahead Lance.
Um, so I didn't catch any of that discussion, um, just 'cause I, I think it was away from the microphone. But, um, I'm understanding that there's some sort of a board that lists qualifications for different people?
Yes.
In the room there?
All, it's for all of the firefighters, the volunteers. Yes.
So it lists, it lists, uh, so how, how many people are listed on that board?
I don't know. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Fourteen people.
Fourteen people.
Fourteen?
Yes.
Okay, and, and Jess, did you put that list together?
I didn't. This is, I believe, either a Sean Parrish or a, uh, Jeff Pritchard project.
Okay, so is this the organizational flow chart?
It is, it, no, it's a...
When was the last time that was updated?
Um, I don't know when the last time it was updated. I think there was some more stuff that was put on there since the last time I looked at it. But, uh, um, I, I believe it's fairly accurate from what I see there, um, but...
Did you just say that you, you had, there were a couple certifications you had that hadn't been added to it?
Correct.
Okay, so is it possible that there's certifications other people have that haven't been added to it?
I don't think so. I think that, uh, before this board was...
You don't think that's possible?
I, I, I think that probably these guys made sure that it was up to date as far as their certifications were before they brought it up here today.
Okay.
Pretty sure it's accurate.
Are you done Lance?
Are any of them there in the, in the room?
Yeah, Sean Parrish is here. He's the training officer actually.
Okay.
Okay, are there any more questions for Jess? Okay, and, okay, so now mayor, you, it was your intent that Sean Parrish be allowed to get up and speak?
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Sean Parrish, Casco Fire's, uh, training officer. Um, I, I, I'm sorry, my hands are kind of tied. I can only speak of the, the things that I was requested to, to speak of. I can't delve into the personnel matters on there. And I, I think we had that very crystal clear, um, from previous conversations that I've had with council and the other members of the department. Um, as far as the board, the training board that goes up here, the accuracies are, are pretty correct. Um, Jessica, as is indicated, the trainings up here that are listed, he may or may not have some that are listed up there. Um, there may be one or two other pending certifications for other members up there also. Um, they're dynamic. It's my job, the, as individuals become certified or trained or receive adequate training in there. So when they're competent, then I, uh, register their certifications and their, their training logs to the state, which is a Department of Public Safety training. And then once they get their certifications back in the mail, then they're actually good to go. So that's what that reflects. Um, there are three predominant people that stand out on the, uh, the certification board. Each dot obviously represent, has a, a representation. The blue ones represent actual certifications, uh, that the individuals hold. The yellow dots are ones that are in progress. Um, the red ones are things that are, there's only one on there, but it's something that is, uh, an immediate need that needs to be addressed as soon as we can facilitate it. Um, former chief Pritchard, uh, is the top up there, uh, his certifications. Um, and then, uh, if it goes by the number of certifications, then it would be me that has the, the next amount of certifications. And then, um, that was correct. Um, and then, uh, uh, I believe, yes, Jess Pritchard. And then there's, uh, a couple other, uh, people in there that, you know, certifications are pretty close in there. That's how the structure works.
Hold on, wait. You were, um, did you bring the copies of the bylaws for the...
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay, okay.
Uh, how, how are we looking for this coming year as far as scheduled training for outside training? Do we have training scheduled for this coming year?
We always have, uh, what we refer to as outside training potential on there. That's whether or not we can actually send personnel to it. Um, anything outside of the district of Hood River, uh, there's, there's usually lodging incurred and those kinds of things. Um, Department of Public Standards, uh, training down in Salem or the Fire Academy, Police Academy is, they will provide, uh, free lodging in the, uh, dorms down there for the classes. But it's only when there's classes that meet our needs on there. Otherwise, we have to go out to other agencies that are putting on the classes and wherever those are, then we have traveling through, all of those things on there. Um, my training budget, I, I honestly, I don't know where it is, um, as far as physically. Um, I've been told that it's, it's non-existent at this point, which is fine. Um, as a certified fire instructor, there's a lot of classes that I can do in-house. That's what my job is. Um, and then networking with our other agencies, um, we, we trade, uh, we'll trade instructors, we'll trade opportunities, so.
Um, do you also have minutes of the meeting of where there was a vote for...
The vote of no confidence?
Yes.
Yes. Did you...
Yeah, we, we should probably pass that out. And is there somebody here to talk about that meeting or, because I, it's my understanding that you came in after that meeting was done. Is that correct?
No, the, the meeting that I came in afterwards that I was not, um, uh, present for is the, were the conversations of the not responding took, took place.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry then. I'm confused.
On top is the meeting minutes and then the second document is the association of bylaws.
Okay, and we'll probably need copies of that.
Um, I'd like to add one other thing. Um, uh, it was mentioned that the, uh, the certifications are not a necessity. That is partially true. What the certifications, um, represent is a reduction in liability. Um, as Oregon is an OSHA state, whenever there is an injury or something along those lines that takes place, OSHA comes in and OSHA, uh, does their investigation as to the, the causes and, and obvious effects. Um, OSHA does not write fire policies. They go by, uh, what's called NFPA standards. Whatever the NFPA standards are that address everything that we do in the fire service, they look at those rules and regulations. They look at the guidelines that NFPA puts out. If we do not abide by the NFPA regulations, that is where OSHA then goes after us. The state sets criteria and standards for what is, um, uh, what it takes to be certified as a firefighter one, entry-level firefighter, and then progressive steps up from there. That is all determined by the state. They make the standards on there. Again, if you go back to certifications as being the, the gold leaf standard, which is why they were implemented in there is because of past practice issues that have taken place in departments across the United States that without the certified level of training in the areas in there, agencies, cities, districts were losing lawsuits left and right. That's, that's honestly what certifications represent is that you have been trained, you're certified, you've invested the time into there. And with those certifications, those are your buffers between liability and loss.
Can we have Tom, Tom, you want to go ahead and put that down? I feel bad, your arm's gonna go to sleep. And then I think you were gonna address the issue of the self-appointed. Can you, can you explain how this vote came about?
Yes, ma'am. Um, again, I'm gonna have to kind of condense some of this stuff because I'm, I'm not sure what stuff would lead into, um, discussion of personnel, things on there. But, um, as far as the, um, there was never a self-appointed to the positions that we, that myself, uh, Megan and Jessica hold. It, uh, was going through and looking at the certifications required as a fire officer that is set forth by the state, DPSST. Um, and we looked at to see what we had within our ranks that would meet those qualifications. Um, what I, and attest to is, is, um, the only thing that we had in place that actually met the, the letters of the law and the requirements is no longer with our department and that was Chief Pritchard. Um, and then this, to be a chief officer in the highest level of officer ranks on there. Um, the, the next person that met those, uh, requirements in there was myself. Um, I'm one class short of making, um, and being a, a fire officer and then I have the rest of the prerequisites and those kinds of things on there. Um, and then Jessica and Megan had the next, I think about equal. There was a couple differences in their certifications, but with a, a very short amount of time, they would be able to meet all of the prerequisites necessary to, uh, qualify for the state standards of fire officer.
I was, um, just looking at the bylaws and it talks about appointing officers, president, vice president. I was, um, just looking at the bylaws, and it talks about appointing officers, president, vice president, and so on of the association, but it doesn't talk about appointing positions like captains or fire chiefs or acting fire chiefs. Where does that come from, that authority to do that?
The authority comes from within the structure in there. That's the rank and file, and there was the operational side and things on there. The association is a, is an association of the volunteers, um, and they're, and, and I don't know the legalities within the association. Um, that's, that's not my area. As far as the command structure that goes on within the operational side of the fire department, that comes from within. And then that is what I was talking about with these standards that the state says, that, um, they're highly suggested, that the persons have these qualifications of which to be in those titles.
I can, I can speak to that if you want to.
Sure. I don't know.
Um, just a minute, maybe make a note of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I, I guess I, I guess I'm not really totally understanding what you're saying. Are you, are you saying that you and Megan and Jessica are now in charge of the fire department of Cascade Box?
The daily operations thereof, yes.
And by what authority?
By the authority of that this, this is the, um, in the ranks or files, when you have a, your, um, next administration, next higher up of chain of command, who leaves, um, the, their position, who quits, um, that's basically how that comes about.
Okay. My understanding is that the fire department is owned and operated by the city of Cascade Box. Is, is that true?
Well, that, that's sort of what I was getting at. I was wondering, and, and maybe we should have Jess answer that. Is there an ORS that, uh, gives you the authority to name captains and, and positions within the fire department? Or is that really something that you've, you've done, um, and I'm not criticizing or, or making a judgment, but it's something that you've done in the absence of leadership? And what we're struggling with here is, um, or at least what I'm struggling with from the legal standpoint is, um, what authority, um, did you have to do that, and to what extent does the council need to recognize that? From my standpoint, it seems that it's the council's job to decide who is a captain, or at least to give, to, um, delegate authority to somebody to decide who are captains and, and how the chain of command works.
Um, uh, in part, there is, let me see, I'll try to press here. The council does not delve into daily operational and operational structural things within the departments. So the authority to, of the council to appoint people to the ranks of captains, lieutenants, firefighters on there. No, the chief position, the chief officer position is, my understanding is that what the council does in the ranks and files and the structure on there. In the absence of that, internally, that's why we have our command structure that we have, it's, it's like a pyramid. Chief is at the top, assistant chief, and then it goes down from there. When those points removed, then the responsibilities and authorities then fall back to the other. Throughout the state of Oregon, I can't speak on behalf of Washington, I can't speak on behalf of California on there. When it comes to promotional things, um, and how they promote them within, every agency is different, but they follow the guidelines of whatever, um, the governing body that, that allows them to be in power and operate as a fire department. So, when it, that's why I spoke on behalf of the certifications, that it is the state of Oregon that says what you must have to be these officers, to be in those ranks. Um, that's why, if we talk about those certifications on here, um, there are certifications to be an assistant chief and there are certifications to be a chief. If you don't have those certifications, and yet you are the chief, or you're an assistant chief, or you're a firefighter and you don't have those, whatever the level of responsibility that you are at, ultimately, it falls back onto liability when, when and if something bad goes, goes on.
Go ahead, Kevin.
But, I guess, none of, none of, none of the stuff you just talked about grants authority for you guys to appoint yourselves to positions. Because that authority comes from the council, which is the governing body of this town. So, we haven't granted you that authority, so you don't have that authority to appoint yourself to a position. It's, it's plain and simple. If, if you read the city charter, it specifically says, "All powers rest unto the council." Unless those powers are specifically in writing granted to another person, those powers rest here in the council.
I, I.
So you don't have the authority to appoint, I mean, no.
As, as, as you said.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not a politician. I'm not, I'm not going to argue that the, the polit- that's not what I came up with.
I'm not sure this is polit- politician stuff. This is more, um, legal stuff, and I understand the liability side of it, but, um, a person has to be appointed and given the authority to do something by the council.
And, and again, I have said, the decision that came about was not one that came about lightly. It just, this, this stemmed from a vote of no confidence.
I understand that, but, but I'm saying that there is no decision, because you don't have the authority to make the decision.
Again, I, I'm not, I'm not going to bat here back and forth with you about policies and procedures that what council says they can, can't do, and those kinds of, that's not where I delve in. I'm, I'm a firefighter, I'm the training officer. Those are the things that I do. I go by what the state tells me, and I go by what my next chain of command tells me. When that chain of command is absent, I have to fall back on the training and what those, what the state says I can, can't do until otherwise, you know. Um, this, the power that gives me that authority, being the state fire marshal's office, who then regulates what is and is not a fire department on there, has said, and has attested to, the structure that is in place is legitimate.
Okay, can you explain the vote of no confidence, please?
I, I, I can't without diving into personnel.
Okay.
I, I can't, other than to say that the, there was, um, a majority of the, uh, of the body with one to two, um, that voted against there. But the vote of no confidence was not in a ruling from the department. It was an ask, a vote of no confidence in the leadership ability and, uh, character. And that's what, uh, we've asked council to recognize the fact that the body of the volunteers, the association, I guess, that is left, um, voted in no confidence in the leadership ability. I can't speak on behalf of, I can't speak into the, uh, the regarding the, uh, personnel issues that also went up there.
Are there any more questions for Sean?
Yes.
Go ahead, Lance.
Um, you just said that the structure that's in place is legitimate. Is that correct? Did I understand you correctly?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, so, when you, when you talk about the, and I, I believe that I've, I've missed, I missed, I did not hear some of your explanation earlier, so I, I may be asking you to repeat that. But I, um, you're, you're talking about the structure in place of, um, you, Megan, and Jessica being recognized as the leadership structure for the department. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is.
And, um, are you, so that, and your basis for saying that it's legit is that, uh, the certifications that the three of you have together, um, fulfill the, the state fire marshal's requirements for chief officer? Is that correct?
In, in part, that the state fire marshal's office, the, uh, chiefs of the fire board of Hood River, uh, recognize that the structure that is in place is workable, is, um, acceptable, and that the, uh, it, it has to be recognized by the city council, um, is their words, um, to, uh, continue in the mutual aid contracts. But yes, that the state fire marshal's office has said that the structure that is in place is, um, legitimate, and that they recognize it within their, um, their rank and structure that, that it works.
So, so it's based on the Hood River, Hood River Fire to Transport as well as the state fire marshal? That's what makes it legit?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and then, um, and I think this is the part that I, I may have missed, if you said it already, I apologize. Um, are you saying that having an acting chief, um, we don't have the certifications to do, to, to make it a legitimate structure?
No, that's not what I'm saying. Um,
Okay.
Um, and clarification is that the acting chief had a, was, there was a vote of no confidence in the ability to be the leader of Cascade Box.
Okay.
Is that, was that what your question?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Uh, Sean, question. Did, did I hear, did I just not hear you state that, that, um, that the fire marshal and that the Hood River Board, uh, Fire District Board said that it had to be accepted by the city council?
Recognized.
So this to be so?
It had to be recognized. They have to have a letter from the city council saying that they.
It will recognize you.
Yeah, they recognize, yes.
And what, then what that really gets back to is what we were discussing, that the, the ultimate authority comes from the city, that, um, apart from the city, you've met all of the other requirements, but the ultimate authority has to come from the city to decide who is going to, who they're going to recognize as being in charge of the fire department.
And, and I believe that, and we, we have spoken on that before, that I have no way, uh, infer that the council, the council has the right to appoint whoever they want in whatever position as chief of, of the department. That's never been an argument on there. Um, what's, what this is coming to lie from is, is from the vote of no confidence of the acting chief and the leadership at the, of this time, formally.
Okay, right. So was there a question that Jess was, did you needed to answer?
Yes, sir.
All right, yeah.
I can, I can speak to some of that if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Um, it sounds like to me that the bylaws that you guys have there are bylaws from the association, not bylaws of the city. Those are bylaws that are written by the volunteer association, which in itself is a private club. It's a club that is made up of volunteer firefighters to manage monies for social functions that benefits, um, volunteerism within the fire department. So those are the, those are the bylaws that I believe that you have there. They're not written by anybody here from the city. Um, operationally, the, the structure of the fire department is, is set up by the city, by the council. The council decides who's going to be the fire chief. They set that structure up. Um, as far as who's beneath that, those are generally appointed positions by the fire chief, who the authority is granted by the council. The council grants the fire chief the authority to set these positions. The positions, uh, Jessica and Megan, um, their positions prior to this whole, um, incident that's happened here today, um, they were not of any officer's positions. They were not appointed by the fire chief. So that is a self appointment. Um, the fire chief has to appoint those positions, which there is not one. There is no one in the department with the authority to make those positions. The council is the ones that have to give that authority to someone to appoint those positions. There is a process. There is, um, um, we do have, um, standard operating procedures that were developed by the fire chief, our previous fire chief, which sets a, a process in order for people to be promoted in those positions. My position in the fire department, assistant fire chief, which is appointed by the fire chief, that was the chief position appointed by the council. Anyways, that's the.
So, yes, in here, should we go on to?
Okay, um, can I make a motion to, uh, continue this meeting on Wednesday when Megan Webb and Jessica, um, I, I forgot Jessica's last name, I apologize, uh, can be here at the meeting?
Uh, Mayor, I'm not sure you need to. Um, I was going to suggest that, um, we could have, um, an executive session to, um, discuss the, the city's rights and liabilities with respect to this issue. Um, to discuss that with me at this point.
Okay.
Is it too late to add that to the agenda for tonight?
No, I don't think it's too late.
Do we have any more agenda items to attend to?
No, just, no.
Yeah, I would move to move into the executive session. We have a, we have an executive session on the agenda, wait, not for that.
But not for that, it's just like.
No, but I, it's, um,
It has to be posted.
It doesn't actually have to be posted if there's been a, if there's an emergency situation, and we have to make a decision and respond to, um, to this, um,
This letter of our deadline for our mutual aid agreements that has to be done by August nineteenth.
The county defense board, so.
Emergency, if you're on making.
Um, so, that being said, we're going to enter into executive session one nine two six six zero two H, Legal Counsel, um, after a ten minute break.
Counsel, no, sir, excuse me.
Okay, Tiffany, will you call me back?
Give us a second, or we don't need a motion.
Okay, hold on, we're discussing.
I, I, I said I move to move.
I'm sorry.
I'm just asking if we finished the motion, or if he doesn't need to make the motion.
Okay.
We don't, we don't need a motion.
Okay, I will draw it.
Okay. Yes, I will call you back. I will call you both back.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, we're back in regular session now.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion to, um, direct staff to prepare a letter from the city stating that Mr. Zerking is acting fire chief, and responding to letters seven twenty-five and eight fifteen from Mr. Cranwell. To, for, direct staff to prepare a letter from the chief responding to the letter of seven twenty-five from Cranwell. And direct the mayor to set up a meeting between the chief, Jessica, Megan, and Sean to investigate the vote of no confidence by the firefighters.
There's a motion, I need, okay, the motion's been made by Kevin Benson, seconded by Tom Cramlett. Do we need discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lance.
Um, is this going to happen tomorrow? Is that part of the motion?
I will make every effort to, uh, no, it's not part of the motion, but I will make every effort to have this happen as soon as possible be, given the deadline.
Is that all, Lance?
Yep.
Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
And abstained? Motion passes.
Would you like to say why?
Um, go ahead, say why.
Uh, I just feel it's, it's super important this happens tomorrow. It has to be communicated to Cranwell. Um, and, um, other than that, I, I feel like it's, you know, it's a, it's at least in action, but it really does have. But it really does have to happen right away, and I appreciate Alex's willingness to do that within the deadline.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right.